Welcome to the Northeast Ohio Media Group Candidate Debates. Thanks for joining us, I'm Emily Bamforth. Today, we're hosting a debate for the Euclid Board of Education up for election November 3rd. The candidates will introduce themselves in a minute, but first, the rules. We'll start with one minute for each candidate to introduce themselves and explain why they're running. Then we'll ask questions, giving each candidate 90 seconds for an initial answer and a minute for any follow-up. At the end, we will allow for 10 minutes for the candidates to ask each other questions, with 60 seconds permitted for the answers. So let's get started. Kay Van Ho, would you like to begin?
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Kay Van Ho. I am running for reelection to the board. I certainly appreciate this opportunity to speak with all of you. I have three children, they've all gone through the Euclid schools. I know that I bring common sense, as well as the experience of being on the board for a long time. I hope that I will earn your vote. I believe that the experience, the common sense, and the knowledge of education will help me serve you well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy, would you like to go next?
Hello, my name is Kathy DeAngelis, and I am running for my second term on the Euclid City Schools Board of Education. I also have had three children who have gone through Euclid City Schools and have graduated from Euclid, and have gone on to advanced degrees. They got their foundation from Euclid City Schools. In 2011, I decided to run for school board at that time, because I thought I needed a project, and I want my project to be able to give back to the community. So I have jumped in both feet, and have became an active board member for Euclid City Schools. I have participated in various activities, have attended big shows, volleyball games, football games, basketball games, and I've also helped in the leadership, choosing of the leadership for Euclid schools. As being a member of the community, and an active member in the community, I feel like I have done a very nice job, and really look forward to being a part of, continuing a part of the school system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Steve, would you like to introduce yourself?
Thank you so much. My name is Steve Johnson. I'm a challenger to these two ladies for the school board. I have five children in district. I'm a class of 88, as a matter of fact, when I was in school, Ms. Van Ho was actually on the board. So, and it's one of the main reasons I'm running. Our city has changed, our school has changed, we have a lot of issues that, quite frankly, aren't being addressed, and quite frankly, the community pushed me. They said, "Hey, you know what, you do a great job." My son just graduated a couple months ago, and coming from the Euclid school system, and they do a great job there, there were some challenges. And so, you know, I want to bring new, fresh ideas, you know, and just try to help move us forward. So like I said, I'm a challenger to the ladies, they've done a great job, but you know, it's time for fresh blood.
All right, thank you so much. All right, let's get started. The district met four out of 24 standards on its 2014 state school report card. What needs to happen for the district to improve these scores? And Ms. Van Ho, would you like to start?
Sure. We've, we know that our students are coming to us anywhere from two to four years behind when they start school. So what we've done is expanded our early learning center. We now have over 200 students who go through that program, and we start them at age three so that they can get ready. We know that students that come from a lower economic background have a challenge with the number of words that they know. They're only exposed to about 10 million words by the time they reach age five, and someone from a middle-class area is going to be exposed to about 35 million. That gap, we see, has to be made up. We also need to challenge our gifted kids, and we're doing that now by self-contained classrooms for the gifted students, which I have been a proponent of my entire term on the board. So I'm happy that we're finally getting to that point, because I think that when you have them all together, you can really accelerate them much faster. We also need to teach parents, and we're working on that as well, to try and show them what they need to be, you know, need to be doing at home with their students. A lot of our students don't have the equipment to do their homework at home. And I know that sounds basic, but it truly happens that, you know, they don't have paper, they don't have scissors, they don't have an extra notebook or pen or pencil, and, you know, we can't supply all of that, but we certainly need to make it more important for the parents to do so.
All right, thank you. Kathy, do you want to go next?
Okay, for one, that was really unacceptable, our only passing four of the 24, and there is no excuse. And things are in place, but things do not happen overnight and immediately. It didn't happen overnight that our scores dropped so suddenly, it's over a time period. So now we need to go forward, we need to stop blaming everybody, and make a step forward and go. The Early Learning Center, which we opened up, this is the third year, and it's expanded, we even have two full-day classrooms this year to help out and try to make higher achievement there. But also too, there's children that started in Euclid School at age three or age five, and have continued through Euclid School for 13 years, and did not take a break and leave in transientness, are succeeding in the schools. We've offered at the high school over the last two years what's called dual enrollment classes, their Lake Erie College classes being taught on the campus of Euclid High School to our Euclid High School students, giving them that option to getting college credit, and it's actually being paid for by the state versus them paying for their own college tuition. Other options are the post-secondary education option, which the students actually leave and go to another campus, like Cleveland State or Lakeland Community College, and that program is expanding too over the time. So there are changes in place, and changes have been being made, but still, there's no excuse, we still need to do better.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Johnson?
So to the point of the report card that the school just received, we hear oftentimes, you know, "Well, we need more time, we're trying, we're doing this, we're doing that." And when I came back from the military, and we moved back from DC, my son was a freshman at the high school. And when I looked at the school, and we saw, I mean, I was just blown away. I went to the school, it was a standard of excellence when I went there, and to see all the changes, for the negative, for the worst. I spoke with the superintendent at the time, and I spoke to the principal, and they said, "Well, we're trying this, we're trying that." And I constantly heard, "Did the school blame the parents, the parents blame the teachers, the teacher blaming the board?" And there's, no one took ownership of it. And so, my son, who graduated in June, actually had a second interview at Harvard, coming out of the system, because as active parents, who held teachers accountable, who had the board accountable, who was very active in their life, was able to say, "Hey, this is what we can do. The components are there, it's just we need to do more." And to continue to accept excuses, and say, "Well, they came from Cleveland, or they came from East Cleveland," is an excuse. We need to raise the standard, hold people accountable, and move the ball forward. And the citizens are tired of it, which is why I'm running. Every door I knock on, they're like, "Why should we pass another levy? Why should we give more money?" You know, you're continually getting poor grades.
All right, thank you very much. Any follow-ups? Ms. Van Ho?
Well, I'd like to say, I don't think that we are getting excuses when we talk about the poverty rate of 83% that are getting free and reduced lunches. It's not an excuse. It means that we have to work differently than a school district that doesn't have that poverty rate. The same thing with a 35% transient rate. That means we have to work differently. And when you look at the state report cards, number one, the whole state testing system, I could go on and on and on about why it is invalid. And we already know that this last year's results are invalid. The state has admitted that. But yet, they're going to post them, and everybody's going to see them, and yet, they're saying they're invalid results. Well, okay. I'm not trying to make excuses, and I don't accept excuses. We have a plan in place, we work very hard on that plan, we've been following it. The state introduced us to a new formula, we use it, we do what the state says, and we follow the process that they have given us to improve.
All right, thank you. Mrs. DeAngelis?
I would like to add to that, that, you know, Heather Miller, the curriculum director over at the Ford Ice Building, was hired to help us with all these test scores, and to help us with improvements, and help us make things more available, and access, and interventions, and, I'm sorry, interventions and enrichments for the students. And other things too, is that we've brought the technology into the buildings. The new schools were built with the new technologies. We've had to retrofit the middle schools and the high schools so that we can be on the technology, because the kids do know, the students know how to use the iPhones. So then now we have the iPads and the Chromebooks. So we are introducing the technology so that they are able to take the tests and get the scores, where that was some issues before, because we did not have the technology available. And that's changed in the last couple of years.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Johnson?
Again, I appreciate what the ladies are saying, but it's the measurement by which everyone is measuring. So we can't say, "Well, I'm throwing it out because the test stinks." I agree with you in theory that, you know, the Common Core has put a lot of pressure, kids having continued test after test after test. And that's constantly what we do. We teach to the test, because as we look at the formula, we need to have bodies in the seats, so instead of suspending a child who's disruptive, who's disrespectful, some kids have even put hands on teachers, we know it costs us more money for that child to be at home than if the child's in school. So it is those types of things that are running the day. And so when we look at, how do we move forward? How do we get better? We have to say, "I need to take ownership." I work closely with the school. I sit on the board for, that works with aspirant teams. So the school has me, comes in, and I'll talk to 80 kids at any given moment, and you see what's going on. Again, we are this hands-off approach, or just say, "Hey, I passed this levy," or "I sent this bulletin down, and it's on the teachers, and wipe our hands of it." We have to stop it.
All right, well, moving on to something people are very passionate about, and you guys talked about in the last question, standardized tests. What are your views on state mandated testing, and how do you think the school district needs to approach these tests? And first up, Mrs. DeAngelis?
First of all, teaching to the test, I don't think students learn what they need to learn, because the teachers are following a roped plan from a curriculum that's handed to them, either from the state, from their administrator. The teacher's creativity is gone, and different methods of teaching it. They have to push that information through, so that question's going to be on the test, I got to make sure they know that question. And it's not necessarily, they're not learning it, they're just memorizing it and going from there. But I do see some benefits of state testing when it's not done 20 times during the school year. I think it is nice to measure our students against other students, to see, but also I think that it's pitting teachers against each other to see who is, you know, pushing the information down, or who's giving the information differently. And I don't think it's benefiting the students.
All right, thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I would agree with her completely, in totality. The Common Core curriculum in terms of the pressure that is put on the teachers, and when I go and talk to the teachers, you have some that are retiring early, or some that are transferred to different grades where they don't have to deal with it. And then the stress to see young people. My children, I have five children in the district, my two youngest are at an elementary school, and to see, you know, we spoke earlier, once someone mentioned the Chromebooks. You put a Chromebook in front of a child, and you talk about kids coming from somewhere else, they can't give them an instruction. So a child could sit there for six hours, if they can't turn it on, if they can't figure out how to navigate, could you imagine the stress and the anxiety that a child goes through? So again, it is these types of things that come from much higher than us, and I understand, I agree with it, that it's a problem. Yes, should we have some form of measurement to say, "How well are we doing compared to everyone else?" To me, that's a given. But at the end of the day, the creativity is gone, and, you know, I say, "We're getting bad grades, we've been getting bad grades," so the teacher should just say, "I'm going to teach, I'm going to teach the children to learn," and let the chips fall where they may, versus worrying about trying to save my job if I don't hit this metric, and they judge me according to that.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Van Ho?
Well, one of the things that I have a hard time with are the standardized tests, just the idea that a child goes in and takes a test based on what has been, they've been exposed to and what they've learned. The teacher is then evaluated on that test, the district is evaluated on the test, but there's no repercussion for the child. They can fail the test, and there is no consequence for them. If you think about, especially when you get into the upper grades, lower grades, you know, you teach the kids, "Rah rah, this is the test, do your best," and so forth. But once you start getting to middle school and high school, they know that there's no repercussion for them. So there's nothing in it for them to really try their very best, unless they just happen to be a motivated student in one. But when you look at the fact that this last year's tests, and every year this happens, the schools don't even get the results until we're halfway through the next school year. So there's no way for us to use those tests as a valid judgment of what's gone on in the classroom, and then be able to say, "Okay, we need to fix this when school starts in August, and we don't have the results to even do that." The other thing is, they keep changing the tests, so, and they change the whole way they're given, but they also change the standard for the test. So at one time, you could have 70% to pass a test, now it's 80%. So if 80% of your kids don't get 80% on the test, you don't get that point.
Right.
You know, and I only know of masters and doctorate degrees that require 80% to pass those traits on courses. I think it's unfair to the kids, I really do, and the teachers.
All right, anybody have any follow-up?
I'm in agreement.
I would like to say, on the technology, the kids know how to use the Chromebooks, because we start teaching them with the Chromebooks as early as kindergarten. So they are exposed. What we had to teach them this last test was how to manipulate the computer. It's not just go in and say, read the question and put an answer down. Now they have to demonstrate how to do the problems. And that's a different think process, because it's not just that you have to think through the question, but you have to be able to manipulate data that's on the computer when you're looking at it. So that's a little more challenging.
You're just not filling in bubbles anymore.
Right.
To that point, you know, again, the numbers pan out, and me being in the school, I'm very active in the school, and I hear from all the teachers, and even from the kids. So to turn it on is one thing, to your point to navigate it, they struggle. And I've heard stories from my children of kids sitting for four or five hours, because they didn't know what to do. And the teacher is not allowed to help them.
Okay, that comes in, I'm sorry, can we?
Go ahead.
That comes in, sometimes, there's a teacher that pointed out, and it wasn't in our district, but it's very typical, the language that is used on the test, is whether or not the kids have been exposed to the terminology and the language. And we worked really hard to change our whole curriculum to match the terminology and the words that they use, because, you know, we talked about early on, the difference in how many words kids are exposed to. But the story is that there was a kid, and the teacher says, "I know you know how to do this problem." He says, "You know, why can't you do it?" And so, the kid's trying to explain what the problem was, and he says, "But I don't know what mow the lawn means." So he struggled with that problem, then of course, does not skip the problem, because he's sitting there trying to understand what mow the lawn was. They said, "What is cut the grass?" "Oh, well, they were saying cut the grass, I know how to do that."
Right.
"I didn't know mow the lawn."
Right.
And that is something that urban schools struggle with.
Again, we're in agreement.
All right, great. We're going to move on to funding. The state is actually increasing aid to Euclid schools in the current budget cycle. Not all schools can say that, but is it adequate funding to maintain services and keep improving outcomes? And we'll start with you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, so we just had a meeting this past Tuesday, and we talked about, there's a lot of challenge in our city. We, the way our school is funded, we get money that's part of a shared income revenue with the city. And there's a push, because the city is in $55 million in deficit, and they want to kill that funding. We need a new high school. We have, you know, presented a Phase Two, so we built four brand-new elementaries, we need, there's some things on the table about consolidating some other schools, creating a new campus, and it didn't make it to the ballot, and that was their decision coming up this fall. But what we see is services being cut. Our school does a great job in terms of, we've won awards in terms of managing money. I think they do great with what they have. But sometimes we see some situations where, you know, is, for example, my daughter plays soccer at the high school. They've had the same uniforms for seven years, for the girls, same uniforms. So, but then we look at some other areas, where the football team got uniforms this year, and they got them three years ago. So we look at how the money is managed, and so forth and so on. So again, we do a decent job, but we can do better. We can do better. And then we'll see what happens, because right now, we need to go back to the citizens to pass a levy. We have a middle school at Forest Park that's basically falling down. And so, it's going to be tough to get that money, and then what happens? So there's going to be some challenges.
All right, thank you. Ms. Van Ho?
Well, I've been around with a lot of those challenges, and they aren't easy. We will work our very best to do that. We do stay within our budget, we're required to, and when people talk about the extra $5, $5 million that we got, I chuckle, because they don't understand how much we were supposed to get and didn't. The state had devised a whole new formula on how they were going to judge school districts, and we ended up getting capped, and we are losing millions, many more millions than five, millions and millions of dollars, because the state said, "Oh, we can't give everybody what they should have, we're going to cut that back, and then we're going to cut it back some more, and we're going to cut it back some more." So we're down to only getting 6% increase, and that's not enough according to the state's own numbers on what we should be getting. We need the extra money. When you have 23% of the students on disabilities, those students have to come first. They have to get whatever services they need. And that number is increasing every year. So that means you have to add more staff. Staff equates to money, and unfortunately, in the end, the only place that we get really additional dollars is really either through the state or through local tax levies. And we're trying very hard to stay off the ballot as long as we can.
All right, thank you. Mrs. DeAngelis?
Well, the last time we passed an operating levy was in November of 2012. Prior to that, we had passed, you know, some bond issues for the buildings. But with the state, this $5 million, everybody thinks it's a lot of money to us, and it is a lot of money, I'm not diminishing it, but there's also state mandates that we have to follow. And everybody thinks that charter schools just gets the money from the state of Ohio, or kids who are on Ed Choice vouchers, or wherever the name is this year, for the voucher program. That money has to come out of that $5 million. And if the state gives us X per student, they're actually taking X plus two for the charter school or the voucher student. So it does appear that we got $5 million more dollars, but actually, in operating wise, we're operating with less or equal to what we've had before. And we really have worked very hard to stay off the ballot. There's been, some union concessions have been made over the years, and unfortunately, we had, you know, with transportation, we privatized transportation, and that has saved us a half a million dollars. But a half a million dollars, when you have a $75 million budget, is very little money. And, but still, we're doing everything we can to stay off the ballot. And at some point in time, we do have to go back to the voters for levy, but we also have to do a bond issue for the new schools, to have the new schools. And that needs to come, once the state can give us a formula and can fund it a little bit more. It's too expensive at this time for us to go on the issue for it.
All right, follow-up?
Well, you know, she mentioned about the privatization of the busing, which was a huge issue. The way it was done, it was very backdoorish. That's how they felt. My bus driver was basically forced into retirement, in a nutshell. They said, "There's no new company," they were told, all these things, "Your, everything will carry over, your vacation, your benefits, et cetera, et cetera, everybody's going to get hired," which was not the case. This group that came in, they didn't know the routes, they weren't from our community, and we, even to this day, we still see the ill effects of the privatization of the busing. And from what I'm understanding, in terms of the maintenance costs, they're actually in the red. So again, we've made some decisions that's not always been, I get it, you can cut, 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 but until, to attract new families to a better tax base, then you need to have good schools. And that's the bottom line, when you only get cut so much.
Ms. Van Ho?
Yeah, there was no backdoor deal, that is just an insult.
You can look at the tape, you can go to the tape.
Excuse me, that is an insult, let me, I'm, that is an insult, there was no backdoor deal. Number two, the problem we were having with bus drivers at the time, and the union tried to work with the board and could not get anything accomplished. But the problem was, when you have X number of routes, and you have 14 bus drivers call off on a day, not a blue flu or anything else, everybody had all their different other reasons, some called off early, some didn't. When you have field trips scheduled, and you can't allow them to go, because the field trip bus driver didn't show up for work, we worked and worked with that union, and could not get them to be able to control their own union members. So we had to look for outside services, and we did.
The way you want about it.
Because we have, excuse me, we have to make sure that the kids get to school, or we can't teach them. And we did it, it's worked, it is working, it is not still having all these problems that you talk about.
I'm at the bus stop every day.
All right, all right. Okay, moving on, Mrs. DeAngelis.
Two things. One more last point about the buses. Bus drivers that were qualified and certified and passed their tests were offered jobs. Some of them chose not to take the job for various reasons, that's their business. But also, I wanted to bring up too, about the uniforms with the sporting events. Euclid Boosters Association at the high school, Panther Boosters, has been the supplier of the uniforms since 15, 20 years ago now, and they do it through the concession stands at the football games, basketball games, baseball games, and many, many, many moons ago, they used to do it, work in bingo at Memorial Park School. So uniforms not being bought on a yearly basis is not uncommon, but also, I understand, this year, Coach Rotzky, through his foundation, has been able to purchase some uniforms for the students, for the football team, and that was his doing, not us, and not, you know, the boosters, that was them.
Money from the games, may I respond to that, or no? Okay, we can keep it moving.
Let's keep it moving for now. Moving on, we'll talk about, let's talk about the bond issue. The school board decided not to place a bond issue on the ballot in November, which would have paid for Phase Two, I know that we referenced this. Was that the right call? Why or why not? Mrs. Van Ho, do you want to start?
Certainly, okay. I thought it was, I guess it does go around, okay. Understand, when we first started the building project with the elementary schools, we were locked into a 41% contribution from the state. That was prior to the housing market crash. And so consequently, where we are now with the property values in Euclid, is that we aren't going to, it's going to cost us so much more on the homeowner in order to be able to raise this amount of money. So we're looking at the state, and we said, you know, "What can we qualify for right now?" Well, two years ago, it was, we could get 60%, then it went up to 70%. Now it is at 82%. Based on the state's formula, the state should be giving us 82% of the cost of the buildings. They want to hold us back on the 41%. We have been to the, on this legislative route, they say we need to go through administratively. We went through the administrative route, they said we need to go through the legislature. We've gone back and forth, we've made lots of presentations, everybody down at the state says, "It is a great idea, we really love your project, but you're not getting any more money." Right now, our homeowners, they tell us all the time, they're taxed out, and what it would cost the average homeowner right now would be a tremendous burden. So we decided to wait another year to see if we can't get more money from the state. We're still trying.
All right, thank you. Mrs. DeAngelis?
First of all, I would love to see a new high school there on East 222nd Street. I like the concept ideas that we've worked with architects and with the business department, but our residents cannot afford it. At this point in time, an average home of $75,000 was going to cost that homeowner about just under $21 a month. You times that by, you know, a year, a bond issue goes for 30-plus years, you're over $10,000, and a lot of our residents are fixed income. So at this time, it wasn't something that was good for the community. I would much rather see us work it out with the state and try to get that 82%. We're entitled to that 82%, so we should get it. And so it's only fair to our residents that we, as a board and as the administration, do our due diligence, and we go after that money. We shouldn't pass a bond issue and hope that we can get more money and then collect less from the residents. No, we need to be upfront and get the money first from the state, get the commitment from the state that we get the 82%. And then we can have a nice high school building and middle school, and for our students, and we can have the latest technology, what's available, you know, out there in the market at the time. But no, until, until it's something that is affordable for our community of Euclid, I'm not going to support it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
So the Phase Two project, beautiful, I think it will be tremendous. The ladies are right, that the citizens are tax-weary. I knocked on over 2,800 doors to get the operating levy passed. And so when I'm talking to the citizens, they say, "We just built four brand-new schools, why are you here?" So, well, we have the schools, but we need the operating levy for us to operate them. And so, you kept hearing over and over, you guys keep coming back, you keep coming back, you keep coming back. So the ladies are right, that people are, they're tired, they're tired of the taxes going up. But at the end of the day, if our schools crumble, and some of them are literally crumbling, what do we do? So then the community goes. So, instead of going back, we constantly say, well, we get the state, and that's, that's one component. Go back to the state to try to get more money, but bring the grades up. I work with a lot of millennials, I'm in the financial industry. And when I take them to my city, they say, man, you can get to work in eleven minutes. You have this lakefront, all this great stuff. But when they think about raising children, first thing they do, they pull up our report card, they look like, mm, not gonna happen. It is that type of thing that I'm most concerned about. That's one component, yes, let's see how much money we get. But if we don't get it, then we need to produce a product that's worthy of bringing people to the community that will increase the tax dollars, because a lot of people do believe in it. But again, I agree with the ladies, it's a great project, and taxpayers are tired.
All right, any follow-up? Ms. Van Hooch?
No, I just hope that when we do get it all together, that people will support us because it is a good project. Um, we're tweaking it right now to see what are some of the things that maybe we could let go and, and change a little bit to try to reduce that overall price tag.
Mrs. De Angelis?
No, like I said, I will, I will be in support of it once it's an affordable project. It is not affordable at this time, so once we're able to work with the state and to make it an affordable project, and I want the community to realize what due diligence this board did and did not just try to rubber stamp a project through.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
Again, so what's the plan B? If we don't get the money from the state, and I don't hear plan B. So we have to hit, hit it from hard from all sides. So, again, I think you start, well, the easiest place to start is right in the schools.
All right, um, moving on, a final question for you. So when you're campaigning, obviously, you're talking with a bunch of members of the district. Um, communication between the district and the school board, what do you think the status of that is? Um, where do you think the school district can improve in communicating with its, with its members? Um, Mrs. De Angelis?
Well, I think we have made significant improvements, there is still more improvements to be made. Um, they hired, about three years ago, we hired a communications specialist, Audrey. And there's been a calendar, it's gone out the last couple of years, and it's a very nice calendar. This past year, it was mailed out to residents in the city who has kids in the school and some who did not have kids in the school, so let the community know what goes on. There's also, we have the robo-calls, the drop calls, you know, letting the information get out, people. Since we don't have a local newspaper, we rely on the internet and emailing through the district and newsletters and through different events and reader boards and communicating out there. But I also believe, if you really wanna know something, you can pick up the phone and call or make an email. There, no one's trying to hide information from anybody. And anybody at the Board of Education, or even the board members, will talk to anybody about Yookl schools. If we do not know the answer, I won't give you a fake answer. I will, I will give you the right phone number of that person, or I will take your information down and call them and have them call you. Um, communication is a two-way street, you know, you, you know, if you wanna know something too, you need to ask the question. But also, I think the district has making strides over the past couple of years in communicating with the community.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Communication comes in so many different facets. But to her point, we have gotten better, but we still have a long way to go. Case in point, this morning, um, the school was on lockdown, there was a threat. Um, and my daughter texted me early, she said, Dad, um, she sent me the picture, you know, somebody's coming to shoot up the place. And I said, let me reach out, I reached out to someone at the school board, and he said, we're aware of it, this similar threat was at Shaker and John Hay the day before, um, no problem. So I texted her back and said, stay put. Um, as it turns out, I had to go up to the school, it's pandemonium. Parents are freaking out, they're pulling the kids out, this, any, the other. And then they sent out an all-call around nine something. Well, we knew this was an issue the day before, we understood this at seven o'clock in the morning. Kids, technology, they're texting each other, so a little fire turns into an infernal, and parents are panicked. So had we would've just said, okay, everybody stay put, we know what's going on, we saw the Instagram, we have extra security, officers are patrolling the lot, it's business as usual, and everything would've went smoothly. The, the middle school had no problems because most of the kids there don't have phones. But the high school, they end up shutting it down. So my daughter ended up leaving at the, after second period. We lost a day of instruction because of lack of communication.
Right, we'll actually talk about, uh, security procedures in a second. But did you wanna add anything about general communication besides the security measures right now?
Well, I mean, again, it's, it's overall communication with parents. So, we have the technology, we can email, you can tweet, you can fax, I mean, who uses a fax these days? But the, the technology is there, the kids use it, I mean, that's, they live by it. So oftentimes, I'm finding things out that my son was supposed to bring home or whatever, and, you know, it's, you know, weeks later, oh yeah, I forgot to give that to you. When, it could've just been texts, or it could've been fax, you know, whatever the case may be. So, again, we're getting better, but the overall communication between the teachers and the community could be a lot better. And to their point, it's a two-way street. If you care about your child's education, then you should be active. But again, there should be enough information going out.
All right, thank you, Ms. Van Hooch?
Yeah, on this particular issue, and this will sound like an excuse to some, but it's the truth. We have a brand-new high school principal in there. And unfortunately, our, a lot of our administrators are at a conference so that they can learn more best practices from other urban schools around the country. Um, I think it would've been handled faster to the parents, had everyone been there. Um, things like that happen. I'm not putting any blame on any one person. Um, they try to get the best information out they can, we immediately contact the police and so forth. And we do take direction from the police as far as when we can release information.
Right.
Um, we allow them to be the directors at that point. So, I don't, you know, I wasn't in the building, I can't account, talk about that. But as far as communication, we've improved, we've got a long way to go. It's not just the parents, we have to communicate to the people who live in the community because there are more people who live in the community many more times than the number of people who have kids in school. So, you know, we need to expand, and unfortunately, it's expensive to do that.
Right.
And we, when we did the calendars, for example, we got ads to help pay for the cost of that so that we spent very, very little of district money on that. Um, that was something, though, that when people got it, the first thing they did was start calling around and saying, why do we have this, why do we have this? And until somebody contacted, or for me, it was through Facebook, somebody asked the question, then I was able to respond and people could get the answer, and then it made sense to them. You know, we have information, the finance, financial information has to be delivered to the community every year. And they just forget sometimes that they've gotten it the previous year.
Right, all right, so let's move along, um, to obviously something that was brought up, which is along the lines of communication, but safety procedures. Uh, there was a threat today, um, made to the middle and the high schools, I believe? Yes, um, where do you think that Yookl can improve in terms of communication, security procedures? Um, and what is currently being done to keep the school secure? Um, and I think we start with, uh, Mr. Johnson.
Well, um, we, for example, this morning, I talked to, um, Dr. Smilic, uh, over at the board. And I said, you know, what's the chances of getting metal detectors? And I was like, I knew we had a ton of doors, he said the cost would probably be prohibitive. Um, the second best way is the communication with the kids. The kids sent me a picture of the threat early this morning, because, I mean, it's, social media, they're on it. And so I sent, I was talking to one of the officers in, in the parking lot, and he hadn't seen it. And I showed it to him, he didn't know why he was in the parking lot, he was just told to come over. So again, technology can be very inexpensive when you use it in a certain medium. Um, in terms of security, it's just being diligent, it's talking to the children. I talk to them all the time, they'll tell you the kids are troublemaker, they'll tell you the kids who they know has guns or who has a knife, or this, that, and the other. But it's being engaged in the community and talking to the children. So, and that's, that's gonna be your first line of defense and your best safety. As parents, as teachers, as citizens, we only can do so much. I mean, as, as society has proven, it doesn't matter where you live, you know, if something bad's gonna happen, it can happen. And you can only take so many steps.
All right, Mrs. Van Hooch?
Well, one of the reasons why we are so adamant about getting the new high schools and middle schools is because the security will change so much, it will improve so much. Um, the old-way schools were built, the principal's office was in the center of the building. It was, the idea was, you know, you want everybody to be able to see the principal's office, and so that's how the buildings were built. Now, the idea is put the principal's office out on the edge, so everybody has to pass by and you can check in and so forth. And so, when new buildings are built, that's what we do. They also put a certain kind of lock on, and they put, um, special things on the windows to make sure that everybody ends up being safe. So that's one thing that, you know, we're really looking forward to, and we know that the elementaries are so much better off for it. I do agree with Mr. Johnson, the kids are great. But, you know, it was on Instagram, and I don't know how many adults are on Instagram, but, you know, once, once a child tells an adult, that's what starts the whole process. And we are responsive when they do that. Um, you know, we've, I have to tell you one security story real quick. And this is how things can get blown up out of proportion. I got a phone call saying, I heard that the high school principal got shot. And I was like, well, I didn't get a call like that, you know, so I go over and see the high school principal, and I said, I heard you got shot. And he said, oh, I heard I got stabbed. So, I mean, you know, you gotta be careful. And I know that they take a lot of, of care making sure before they issue any statements that everything is accurate.
All right, thank you, Mrs. De Angelis.
Um, I received a text this morning about eight fifteen telling me that something was, you know, there's, this threat was on Instagram. And I happened to be talking to a couple detectives this morning, and they told me that, that the police were handling the scene of the situation, and everything was under control. And I really didn't worry about, you know, things, I knew the police were involved. And shortly thereafter, between teachers and fellow friends or whatever, it contacted me. And everybody kept saying the same thing, and the detective said this, this too. The children are the most safe right now in the building. The teacher locking the door and closing the building. What created some of the pandemonium was that the parents kept showing up at the school and were demanding their children, and weren't, weren't letting the school, you know, check IDs and follow procedures that are set up. And these IDs, I am, procedures are set in place for your child's safety. I mean, we don't know who Bobby's mom is. We need to see, pull the sheet, see who's allowed to pick up Bobby, and release him out of class. And that's what, um, took some time, and that's what caused some problems. And that's when the principal of the high school said, I need to put it on lockdown for the safety of the children that are still here. For all we knew, there could've been a shooter in the parking lot, and that would've created more issues, the police. But also, once the police are on scene of an incident, no matter what the situation is, the police are responsible for what happens from there. It's out of our control, no matter what is said, the police release the information, the police will tell you what you can do next and how to, how to get the information out to the families.
All right, great, thank you.
Yeah, give me just one little quick follow-up. They do have, um, a procedures manual, the state did require every school in every district to create a manual. But I will tell you, it's about that thick for each school. And, you know, the principals are told, well, this is what you're supposed to do, you're supposed to go to the manual first and look up what the procedures are and follow exactly the procedure. Well, you know, sometimes you can't wait that long. Um, I think some common sense has to come into play too.
All right, great, any other follow-up? All right, so we've gotten to the portion where the candidates can ask each other questions. Um, Ms. Van Hooch, do you have any questions for either of your fellow candidates or, or both of them?
Um, yeah, I was a little confused, Mr. Johnson, when you were talking about the kids and the disruptive kids. And are you advocating suspensions for kids?
Um, when it's necessary, absolutely. When I spend time in a school, and I have, I talk to teachers, and they say, I have a child, I have twenty kids, twenty-five children, I have a kid that I can't control, and I send him to the office. And all of a sudden, they're in the office, and the, the principal is asking them why they can't control the child. If they have so many minutes of instruction time, they can't spend a ton of their time trying to handle a child that misbehaved. The school is very reticent to send a child home because it costs them dollars. It costs, it's, it's part of the funding formula. When a kid is suspended, it costs the school money, does it not?
If we expel them, not suspensions.
Okay.
Okay, um, but the problem is, if a kid is at home, he's not learning. Granted, in that one particular class, maybe he was disruptive, maybe there was an issue at home that caused this disruption. We don't, I don't, you know, you can't say, there's, kids come to school with more problems than what adults ever realize, they internalize a lot. And when I was, I did a lot of tutoring for years in the kindergarten classes. And they would come in, and this, you know, you'd be talking to them, and they'd be, start crying, and, you know, I'm not being, I'm not hurting you, what are you crying about? You know, I just remembered that the police came to my house last night and took my father, and, you know. That's on their mind, and that is on their mind all day. Teachers need to have control in their classroom. They need, if they need help, there are plenty of ways to get help into the classroom. And they all have their panic buttons to call if they've got an unruly student that they can take, get the kid removed from the classroom.
Okay, you're missing the point.
But suspending them out of class is not, I mean, out of school is not the answer because these kids need to be in school.
Well, I'm not talking about in every situation, I'm talking about, do you go to the school? How much time do you spend in the school? I'm, I'm there virtually every day. When you see what, do you walk the halls? Do you, I mean, the number one thing on, on your policy in terms of the, let's just go with the dress code alone, no sagging.
Mr. Johnson, back to the, could you talk a little bit about suspensions? You, you'll get a chance to...
Okay, so as we deal, let's deal with the suspension. I saw a child, when I was at the school, with his pants hanging so far off his behind, and the, the words on his underwear was kiss my A. And he, I saw him at the beginning of the day, and I saw him at the end of the day. So if I saw him, how many teachers did he pass?
Oh, then they, they should, are responsible, and they...
But this is the culture, does this...
No, it's not the culture.
You don't, you don't spend enough time, how many kids do you have in the school?
Okay, Mr. Johnson, back to the issue at hand, which is suspensions. Um, so, Mrs. Van Hooch brought up the point that, that it does take the student out of the classroom. But you said that not in every situation should these suspensions be allowed.
Sure, it depends on the situation.
What situations are you advocating?
I'm advocating when a, a teacher cannot get in control of a kid and is disrupting the other eighteen or nineteen children who need to be instructed. If I have one, so, so my argument is, well, I have to keep him because he needs instruction. If it's preventing the teacher, they have enough pressure on them with the requirements from the state, with the pressure from, to your point, uh, parents that socio-economically, single moms, the whole nine yards. And then now I have to deal with one. If he takes me away from instructing the other nineteen for five minutes, for ten minutes, that's too long. How many times do you have to talk to him? How many times do you have to discipline him to the point he needs to go somewhere, where, okay, remove you so I can accomplish my job? We have to change the culture, but we don't support the teachers, I talk to the teachers. They say, so I end up letting him sit there and deal with it, and then I don't get my job done. Or when I send him too many times, the administration calls me and asks me, well, what, you know, I'm gonna send you to a training class because obviously you can't manage this child. To your point earlier, they come in with so many other issues. I'm sorry, I knew the time was up.
Sorry, the time is up, yes. All right, um, well, we'll move on to Mrs. De Angelis, do you have any questions?
Kind of more of a concern here question. Um, you're in the buildings every day, I mean, okay, well, you're a coach, but you're coaching after school hours, correct? Or, well, it makes it sound like you're in the school all day during the day, talking to teachers. And that's why I'm just trying to clarify, wow, I say, you're lucky, you don't have to go to work during the day, and you can be there every day.
I own my own business.
So you're lucky, you're fortunate, you can do that. But just saying too, we do have alternative programs in the district. The Panther Academy at the high school has been wonderful about pulling the students out who just need to come in and finish what they need to do to graduate and get done. They're not doing anything extra activity-wise, they're just doing what, getting down to business. I mean, when my children were at the high school, I was there. I was there at night, I was there for their events and stuff like that. But I've also noticed too, when we talked about the dress code. I have been in Mr. Bell's office numerous times, tried to, tried, tried to get it narrowed down to where we could be more enforceable. But I got told, why are you looking there? You know, and I got told that by parents. We talked about putting, instituting when the new buildings opened, um, in two thousand twelve, of putting a dress code, a uniform code. And the parents outright slammed it down, absolutely did not want it at all. And that was parents of kids who were very well-behaved kids and kids who were problem children in the district. Parents wanted to be able to provide their own kids clothes. I would love to see a dress code or an enforceable dress code that could be done. But if a teacher has to spend time on dress code, they're not spending time on the academics. And if I have to choose between a teacher spending time on academics or dress code, I'm taking the academics.
Okay, give me, may I rebut that?
You may go ahead.
The, I was there for the survey, they went out for uniforms. Half of my children said yes, half my children said no. But again, it's not up to them. So if the school makes a determination that we take the, anything that distracts the child from education, so it's not a bar, if, if a student, a parent, or a teacher can watch a child walk through the school with his underwear hang, exposed all day, and you say, well, as long as he's learning, how could he possibly be learning? So, and, so we come back to the fact that we constantly, neither one of you have people, children in school. So, so we come back to the fact that we constantly, neither one of you have people, children in school, correct?
Not this time.
Not this time. So I have children at every level in the school. I'm very active in the school. I talk to the kids. I understand what's going on. Again, you've done a great job up until this point, but this has passed you by. What's the ideas, the things that we need to do now to change to get us back to where the excellence of Euclid used to be and not a seventy-four percent graduation rate and an F on our report card?
Can I, can I say one quick thing? You're telling me a child who does not come dressed might not be in there learning that day. Not, might be, you know, he might have sagging pants or whatever. For all you know, that student could be your valedictorian. You don't know.
How many valedictorians showing their behinds?
You don't know. You do not know.
I do know.
You know.
I do know.
All right. Every child is different and every child has different needs. And you don't know what kind of situation that child might have at home and that might be the way the child's dealing with it.
It speaks to the culture.
Okay, I got this, that, that it speaks to the culture. I don't like sagging pants. I never have. We keep trying to enforce it. It's been a fight that we've been doing for years. And, you know, it's principals and usually counselors that end up talking to the kids about their sagging pants. But there aren't as many sagging pants as there used to be. There used to be a whole lot worse than it is. Now, as far as what do we do as a board member in that situation? We don't. That isn't our job. It gets turned over to superintendent. It is up to him. We evaluate the superintendent overall on what is done. But it's not, you'll find, if you become a board member, you will not be accepted into that school by teachers. And you better not be talking to all those teachers because they'll start using you.
It's not your job?
Not your job to be in there micromanaging.
It's not about micromanaging.
It is, it is.
I'm not advocating micromanaging. I'm advocating, advocating for the children. Even now, I see a young man walking with his pants loose. Come here, let me talk to you for a second. So let's say you want to come work for my company. Do you think that you would get an interview? Do you think somebody even would talk to you? You say it's not your job. It is our job.
No, 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 I didn't, I didn't.
You just said it's not my job. It is our job.
It's not your job to be, as a board member.
I'm a citizen that wants to be a board member, but ultimately, if it's not about.
A board member does the what do we want to have happen.
I get that.
How is what the administration does. We then evaluate how they do it.
I understand.
And so if we say we want a strict dress code, dress code done, that becomes part of the evaluation. But it's not the sole thing on the evaluation. And it's the same thing then, he then, the superintendent would then hold the principals accountable. And then the principals hold the teachers accountable. But all of that takes, it's, it's, it takes the time for everything to change. And I know that you think that I am totally out of it because I don't have kids in the school right now. But I'm telling you, I talk to the kids right next door and I talk to the kids across the street and I talk to the kids down the street. So I am talking to the kids. And on my street, they don't walk in the street anymore. Because Mrs. Van Hooch kept telling them, you know what? We pay big bucks for sidewalks.